Good evening. We will call the Sonoma City Council meeting to order for August the 21st, 2024. And a couple of, a couple of comments that I just want to make sure you're aware of. There will be two opportunities for members of the public to address items not appearing on the agenda. The early public comment period, agenda item number one will be limited to 10 speakers. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. Speakers who do not have an opportunity to speak during that time will be allowed to make their comments under a later public comment period, agenda item number 10. So when we get to public comment, we'll take you one at a time. Please turn off your cellphone or anything else that may disturb the meeting. And at this time, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Ferrarivas?
Present.
Councilmember Wellender?
Here.
Mayor Gurney?
Present.
Thank you. And we can let the record reflect that councilmembers Dean and Lo are absent this evening.
All right. Thank you. There was no closed session to report on. And now we have approval of the agenda. And with so many councilmembers here, is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Is there a second?
I second.
Um, welcome. Yes, please.
Vice Mayor Ferrarivas?
Hi.
Councilmember Wellender?
Yes.
Mayor Lo, or Mayor Gurney, I'm so sorry.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The motion carries 302.
All right.
We're often running.
Okay. So the senior councilmembers have left us three youngsters in charge. Could be a mistake.
Yeah, trouble.
So we're going to begin with presentations. Item number one. The first item is a proclamation proclaiming August 26, 2024 is Women's Equality Day in the city of Sonoma. So this is going to be a team presentation of the proclamation. Whereas, whereas on August 26, 2024, we marked the 100th and 104th, suffer and succotash, anniversary of the enactment of the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution, which secured the right to vote for women. And...
Whereas in 1976, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors established one of the first commissions of the status of woman in the state of California with the purpose of promoting equal rights and opportunities that enhance the quality of life for all women and girls, and addressing issues of discrimination and prejudice that negatively affects women in Sonoma County. And whereas...
And whereas, women now constitute nearly 50% of our workforce, the majority of the students in our colleges and graduate schools, and an increasing number of primary breadwinners. And whereas, in 2023, 2024, Sonoma County women working full-time earned 86% of the men, of what men earned, and women working in agriculture and service areas, such as the majority of women workers in Sonoma Valley, earned even less. And...
Whereas, even with the gains women have made, work remains to be done in many areas that directly impact equal pay for equal work, including areas to quality, affordable childcare, affordable housing, and comprehensive healthcare for women, including reproductive and mental healthcare. And...
Whereas, the mandate for Women's Equality Day in 2024 is to invest in women and girls to accelerate the progress of our country. Excuse me.
Okay, go ahead.
Now, therefore, I, John Gurney, Mayor of the city of Sonoma, along with the city council, proclaim August 26, 2024 as Women's Equality Day, marking the 104th anniversary of the enactment of the 19th Amendment, celebrating the achievements of women and recommitting to gender equality in the city of Sonoma, including equal pay for equal work and accelerating the overall progress of women and girls. Thus, if Joanne is here, please rise and come to the podium. And I want to make sure you notice the equality that we had here in this presentation. So...
I was almost overwhelmed.
Okay.
Almost.
Almost.
The operative word.
No. I just want to thank the city council as...
There you go. Let me give that to you.
Always.
Oh, wait.
You want to take a photo?
We have a Kodak moment first.
Photo op.
Yes.
Photo op.
There you go.
One, two. Thank you.
All right. And congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
I get to say a couple of words. Well, I've done this a few times. I'm doing it again. The data doesn't change too much. Short-term data changes are unusual, but the progress that women make continues to be kind of uphill, sometimes downhill. And I think Sonoma is really a leader. I mean, we look at the women who are in government in Sonoma really as an index. I do want to be able to report next year, because I hope that I will be standing here again with this proclamation on behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women, that there is a possibility of making some progress that's really discernible in this next year. And that specifically is through an initiative that the Commission on the Status of Women has endorsed. And that is the Sonoma County Childcare and Children's Health Initiative, which will be on our ballot in November. And childcare has been one of the missions and priorities for the commission since it was founded. This particular initiative took a lot of effort to get on the ballot, and it proposes a one-quarter cent sales tax increase. The estimated money that will be generated is $30 million. It will be distributed according to a couple of categories, one of which is direct services for childcare to help parents obtain good childcare. Another category is to help childcare providers both expand as well as to increase and develop the quality of the childcare that they present. And the third is early education funding in general. So this is intended to be a five-year initiative. So I am really hopeful that next year, when I come here, in addition to whining about our overall lack of progress in terms of women's equality, I'll be able to say a couple of things like the initiative passed and really excites, some of the money is really flowing, and women are able to go back to work and families are stronger because we have quality childcare. So on behalf of the commission, thank you very much. See you next year.
I will just state, I did attend the meeting presenting the state of women in Sonoma County by the commission, which was about, I think, about eight weeks ago. And in the survey that they did, childcare was certainly one of the tops list. And the other thing about it, especially meeting with the folks that are doing early education, of approaching childcare by supporting the whole family. So there's a lot of really good positive initiatives going forward.
All right. Thank you. And now we have a presentation by Christine Sasco. Did I pronounce that correct?
You did.
Yeah, okay. Director of Sonoma County Environmental Health regarding the micro enterprise home kitchens. Welcome.
Raise this up. So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Christine Sasco. I'm the Director of Environmental Health for Sonoma County Health Services. And tonight I wanted to talk to you about the micro enterprise home kitchen program. And this item is going to be going before the Board of Supervisors on October 8, 2024. So, the micro enterprise home kitchen operation, there are several laws that came along with this. It started in 2018. And the first one was AB 626. And this really brought about this new concept of home-based kitchens and lowering those barriers for people to enter into that business. And then in, like, I think it was the year after or two years after, there was a cleanup bill, which was AB 377. And then just recently, there was a newer bill that passed, which actually raised the limits for revenue and for number of meals that they can serve. So the one thing that's interesting about the, all these, this bill and this program is if the county opts in, we have to opt in pretty much as the program is laid out. And then also, if the county opts in, the cities also opt into the program. So that's why we're here today, is to present this to you, to find out what level of support you have for the program going forward, and try to answer any questions. So, like I said earlier, the MECOs, they're home-based businesses, and they're really lowering those barriers for entry. And in a lot of times, they're helping people that are in those disadvantaged communities who maybe have quite a talent cooking, but don't have the financial resources to be able to start up a full business. And so this is kind of an entry-level way. The original plan is that this would be an entry-level business, and then eventually they would go on into a brick-and-mortar restaurant, you know, down the road. So it also, the other interesting part of this is it increases that access to those cultural foods and also healthy foods. So a lot of times, there's foods that people can't get in our restaurants, but they're cultural or regional, and they're able to get them in a MECO operation. And then the third point here is just that there are a lot of these businesses already going on in the county and throughout the state. And so by putting them into this program, it will give us that health and safety oversight that I think is advantageous for our community. So the requirements are that the operator has to be a resident of the property or private home. And then they also have to have a food safety manager certification. And then their employees can be either a member of the household or a family member. And then they're allowed to hire one outside employee. And then all the employees have to also have a food handler card, which is a little bit lower than the food safety manager card. And then it has to be in the primary residence. So you can't use a secondary home or vacation home or something else like that, mobile home, to be, or motor home, sorry, something on wheels. You can't use that as your MECO. So the MECO has to be the primary residence. And then we also know that many of these residences are rented or leased. And so what we would be doing is asking for landlord approval prior to permitting one of these facilities. And then some of the requirements, further requirements for the MECO is that the food has to be prepared, cooked, and served on the same day. So you can't do preparation the day before and then open for sales the next day. And then the preparation has to occur in the kitchen of the residence. You cannot put in an auxiliary kitchen in your garage or on the back porch or anything like that. It has to be your primary kitchen. And then there's no outside signage that's allowed, no sandwich boards on the street or anything advertising. And then this is the part that was just raised. The sales limit is now 30 meals per day that is allowed, and then up to 90 meals per week and up to $100,000 annually in sales. And then what we're finding is meals can be consumed onsite, or they can also be picked up and delivered. And we're finding that the majority of MECOs that are in operation are doing delivery and pickup. Very few are doing the in-house dining situation. There's no third-party delivery service. If they are doing delivery, they have to go through what's considered an intermediary, which is registered with California Department of Public Health. And, but they cannot use something like Uber or Grubhub or any of those services. So it either has to be that intermediary registered with CDPH, or it has to be one of their employees that's delivering. So some of the changes to health and safety code that are, you know, that are different with a MECO versus a regular restaurant, the biggest one is around the sinks. In a restaurant, generally, you have a dedicated dishwashing, handwashing, and food preparation sink. In this case, you only have to have the one sink, and you can use it for multi-uses. And then the hoods and ventilation, you don't have to go up to the full restaurant standard and have the whole ancil system and that. And then animals are not excluded from the cooking area because it's hard to keep your animals out of your own personal kitchen. So they're not excluded, but definitely in the requirements and the food safety classes and stuff, there'll be lots of communication about not having animals in that food area. And then there are no ADA requirements. So the zoning and land use with MECOs is a little different, where the zoning, your zoning regulations do not apply to MECOs. And then there's also a requirement that there's one permitting authority. So that permitting authority would be the health permit through Environmental Health. But we did look into, can you have a business license requirement? And you can have a business license requirement, and it would be something that we would require as part of the application, that they show proof of that. And then the law also does allow for enforcement of nuisance or noise. If you have a noise ordinance or a nuisance ordinance or that, that would still be enforceable in this case. And then as far as environmental health, we would be doing one routine inspection a year, and we have to call ahead for that inspection. It wouldn't be unannounced like it is in a restaurant. And then we are allowed to do additional inspections when there is a complaint or an outbreak or an illness or something like that, we're able to go back and do a secondary inspection. They would not be included in the placard ingrading system, so they wouldn't have that red, yellow, green placard on the wall. And then their permits would be renewed annually. And then the partner agencies, so like city agencies, code enforcement, fire, and police, we'd work with them also on the signage, noise, nuisance, any of those other ordinances or issues that come up. Just recently, in March, we went to the board and accepted some grant funds that were available. And this is really for the implementation or the process associated with the development of a MECO program. It does not require that you implement a MECO program. It's really that development process. And we were successful in getting $138,000 for this program. What is nice about this is it covers things like public outreach. It covers enforcement, but it also allows us to possibly offset permitting fees for the next year, which is kind of a nice bonus of people trying to get into the business. And then according to the grant letters and that, we looked, and there are 15 jurisdictions that have now entered into a MECO program. And then there are 16, Sonoma being one of those 16, that are looking at going forward with it. Back in 2021, we did some outreach to the cities. We talked with many of the different cities. And what we found was there was a general support for the basic program goals, but there was a little inconsistency and, you know, mixed reactions as far as if we should opt in or opt out at that point. And so that's, so we kind of shelved the program for a little bit, and now we're bringing it back to look at it. We have also, since '21, we've had a chance to really look at the other counties that have implemented it and see how that has gone. And overall, the results have been really good. So what we're looking at is a direction to the board. The board gave us a direction to come with a draft MECO ordinance. And so in that ordinance, we've got a proposal to opt into the MECO program, which means it would be permitted in any residence. But there would be an exclusion in there that it would not be permitted in areas where it's in conflict with our general plan. So every city has their general plan, and then the county has a general plan. And so if it's in conflict with the general plan, then we would not be permitting that facility. So really, the next steps and why we're here presenting today is really just to find out if the city supports this program or opposes this program, and then invite you to reach out to services and, you know, with any questions. And then also, if this, if we were to opt into this program, any questions you might have or considerations you'd like brought forward for the implementation of the program. So with that, I'll leave you with my contact information and answer any questions.
All right. Let's do the questions first. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there any, any limit per county or per city of the number of MECOs that could be in a designated area?
No.
Okay. And then, just, so there's no ADA requirements? How does that apply to this? I wasn't sure.
So there are no ADA requirements for the kitchen and like the restroom of the home?
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
Yeah. And then back to your earlier question about limiting, what we did notice is, early on, when MECOs were being implemented, a couple, a couple counties implemented them as a pilot and limited the number, and have since removed that pilot portion, and now are just allowing any number.
Thank you.
Mr. Wellender?
Two questions. The first one, are there some unofficial MECOs happening in Santa Rosa now?
Yes.
And that's been a basis for how you've been evaluating what makes sense when maintenance?
Yeah.
And this is out of just curiosity. Is there a minimum age or a, yeah, minimum age requirement for someone to, quote, "help" in the family enterprise?
It's not written into the law, but that's something we could actually consider in the ordinance.
No, I think the idea of having the kids help is big, is great. So I'm fully supportive of that. Thank you.
Good.
I was kind of curious as to how you measure the, the sales of a MECO.
How do I answer that? I think we're curious with that, too. A lot of it's going to be on the honor system. And our inspectors are, you know, very well-versed with, like, how much, how much things are costing and the volume and that. So I think we will have a good overview on it, but will we be able to tell within dollars and cents? Absolutely not.
Okay. And will there be a public record or database of all the MECOs in the county? So if I'm going to Hildsburg and I'm looking for an opportunity, you're shaking your head?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm gathering.
Yeah, there's a couple of different databases. There's Cook's Alliance. They have a database of a lot of the MECOs and that. But also, environmental health is required to have a listing of all our inspection reports and all of our facilities, and that has to be available for public view. So a MECO would be included in that. And then I think what we're hearing from a lot of the cities is some sort of notification when a MECO's coming into your city, so that, so that you would know which ones are operating in your cities.
Okay. And are they allowed to, I know they don't have, can't have signs, but are they allowed to advertise?
They're allowed to advertise through that third-party intermediary and such, but not, not like on Facebook Marketplace or anything like that.
Okay. And last but not least, more of a comment. Have you chatted about this with the restaurant industry folks?
We have. And it's, it's actually really interesting. They, for the most part, seem very supportive of it. They see it as an entry level. Somebody who's a home cook, who's wanting maybe to go into this business, it's a way for them to give it a try. They're, they're not as concerned by it because those threshold limits are fairly low.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Any public comment?
Well, I have a comment.
Oh, you have a comment. Okay, please. Yes.
I was, I was just doing the questions first, so.
Okay. Okay. Comments?
No. So I had heard about this program probably two or three years ago, when it was presented by a fund, Impact America Fund, and they were also talking about different nonprofit organizations, so talking about the benefits of these. So I'm, I'm actually very in favor of this. And I have very, very fond memories when I lived in Newburgh, New York, when I was in junior high, of going, one of my favorite places to go was this woman's house, where she served Italian food. And when you went in, you got what was for dinner that night. And it was absolutely delicious and one of my favorite, favorite, for our whole family, one of our favorite things to do. And then ideally, there would be possibilities that someone would open a couple of vegan MECOs. So that would be another thing that would be great.
All right. Mr. Wellender, did you have a comment?
I do. Actually, I do. It's a question. Can I still ask questions? Did you say that the licenses are going to be renewed annually?
Mm-hmm.
So in, in concept, then, if problems arise, then we have a very simple way of addressing them.
Correct.
I'm all supportive of this. I love the idea of, of more ethnic foods and, again, giving individuals opportunities to be creative in how to be able to live in the area. So I'm very supportive.
I should also share, along with this item, we've, we've worked with Cook's Alliance. And one of the things that they have available is what's called Cook's Academy. And it's an eight-week course. And it helps somebody figure out how to set up a MECO. And it helps somebody figure out how to set up a MECO and all the processes. One of the new segments they've added to their course is how to be a good neighbor. So some of those concerns that we had earlier about nuisance and that, they have that good neighbor concern added in there. And then also upon completion of that course, the participant is eligible for up to a three thousand dollar grant to start their business. And then they can also get college CEUs or college credits, sorry, not CEUs. So that's a really nice piece. And then the county is working right now on what we're calling a hub. And it's a website and development for people wanting to enter into the food business for these entry-level programs within the food industry. And this is a way to guide them through that process. And then we're looking at developing maybe some onbudsman's and such to help people start out in these businesses so that they're linked up with the right people. They're connected with legal aid and financial aid and all those other resources available.
Curious, with the prohibition of signage, is it going to be, in concept, word of mouth?
I think a lot of it really runs on word of mouth. But there, like I said, there is a, the website where people can go to. But I think it really runs primarily word of mouth.
Thank you.
Maybe the last question. The Cook's Academy, that's optional, right? That's not a mandatory requirement?
No, it's an optional requirement.
Okay. Thank you. It sounds to me like there's general consensus to support this with this council. Do we need to take a formal action?
No formal action tonight. I think just the feedback and questions are helpful for the county. And then I think your plan is to bring that back to the board supervisors.
Correct.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And have a nice dinner.
You, too.
Somewhere in somebody's house.
I'm going to go try to find one on the way home.
Good night.
Okay, that concludes presentations. Now is the time for public comment. If you have comments about anything that is not on the agenda tonight, this is your opportunity to address the council. What has happened? Okay, we'll move on to item number three, meeting dedications. Are there any? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, council members' reports and comments. And we'll begin, I believe, with the vice mayor.
Yes, so I wasn't able to report out on this at the last city council meeting because I was away on vacation with my granddaughter. So I did attend the Sonoma Clean Power Board meeting on August 1st, 2024. And so just to, one quick update, the other one's a little longer. But so just to announce that they have a new CFO, and not only is it a new CFO, it's the first time that they've had a CFO because Jeff Seifer's CEO has always been acting as their CFO. And so this is a great, it's a great addition to Sonoma Clean Power. And one of the things is he brings expertise in regards to how to focus strategies on being able to reduce the cost to ratepayers. So he's very, so we're really excited to have that because that's a big focus of what Sonoma Clean Power is doing. And then the other thing was a big report on our community needs assessment. And the community needs assessment was done by SMUD, which is Sacramento Municipal Unified
Utilities.
Utilities District, thank you. And so they've done many of these and have a very good reputation in doing. And the reason that we brought them in is because the focus of this is to look at how do we improve at Sonoma Clean Power equity in regards to the offerings and the programs and to ensure that low-income individuals are able to participate in the transition to clean energy. And so the needs assessment was focused on residential, commercial, agricultural areas, districts, and also on transportation. And so the findings of what people needed were, of course, to reduce energy bills, number one. Everybody's like, how do we reduce our energy bills? Help low-income customers with energy bills so people understand them. To improve affordability of energy-efficient solutions. So whether or not you're going to have a, you know, your induction stove top or other items that are electric versus gas. To protect people against power outages, to address climate change, build local renewables, to improve access to information on rates and incentives. And so in response to that, many of the things that they're doing is, and which is key, is time of use training is very key. One of the things that's very important about your usage is that when you use, your electricity is actually more important than how much you use. So, you know, using electricity primarily between eleven and three o'clock. I know there's this kind of misdemeanor out there that you should be charging your cars and such, you know, in the middle of the night. Really, when you want to be using electricity is at the time when there is sun and wind available, until we have geozone developed and we have geothermal, and then we can use it anytime we want. We're not there yet, though. But we're moving there. The other thing is to talk to people about grid savvy. Grid savvy is a way to sign up, which allows you to, there's a small cost of signing up. And I think that the cost for low-income individuals is waived. But it really allows you to connect in a way so that you get information of how your electricity uses and tells you when you're not using it in a way that helps you actually lower the effect overall on the grid. And you actually can get financial savings on your bill for being grid savvy and meeting certain criteria of low usage or usage at particular times. The other thing is, these were the recommendations to do, and some of this is already happening. Those two things are already happening. Want to increase rebates on energy-efficient equipment and products. There already are rebates. Want to increase them, have more of them. Offer emergency outage kits and backup battery generations. Help commercial customers create energy-efficient plans. Offer discounts on Evergreen to low-income individuals. So you can either do Sonoma Clean Power, which has, is primarily all from renewable energy, not all. Or you can go to Evergreen, which is a hundred percent. Evergreen costs more. Trying to, in the future, the recommendation was to make it for low-income people so that they could do Evergreen and not have to pay the extra cost. And then last but not least, to improve their website accessibility. There's many others I would recommend. It's a great, of course, I'm a little nerdy. It's a great read to go to Sonoma Clean Power and look at this overall assessment and recommendations. And that's all, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Wallander.
Indeed, I have two reports, one legit and one kind of legit. I had a chance to fill in for Jack Dean, and I attended the Zero Waste Sonoma Board Meeting. And the primary discussion or announcement is that they are sending out a request for proposals for a design build for a new facility in Windsor for some land that was recently purchased. And it's my understanding, if they're successful through the design process as well as the build process, that we may see this new, I think it's a hazardous waste-type facility. We may see it in production in 2026. The not-so-formal announcement is that I did attend the NASCAR of squash racing last night at the plaza with my fellow councilpeople. And I took a very low-profile role and did not judge them. But the people up here apparently did cast judgment. And that's it.
Thank you, I think. Okay, so on August the 8th, Mr. Wallander and I both attended the mayor's and council members' meeting in Petaluma. And the board meeting, which is comprised of all the mayors, had a presentation on the Bay Area Affordable Housing Bond, which has since been removed from the ballot. It was an interesting presentation, but for not. And at that time, we also appointed one large city and one small city representative to sit on that board. And I don't know that the board will continue to exist until they decide what they're going to do. The big city was Warner Park, the small city was Sebastopol. So also, at that meeting, we had a presentation from the In Response Group, which is the mobile mental health support team that roams the county and is providing services throughout the county. And it was interesting and look forward to receiving the benefit of having those services in the valley. And that concludes, oh, wait, the zucchini races, yeah. Well, that may be what it is, but it was, I believe, the twentieth annual zucchini races. And I've never seen so much zucchini gone to waste. However, it looked like it was quite fun, and it's an acquired taste, I'm sure. Anyway, with that, we will move on. And I believe the next item on the agenda that has been buried here will be the city manager comments and announcements.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And yes, it was a great turnout last night for the zucchini races or the NASCAR squash extravaganza, whatever it was called. It was great to see, and thanks for the staff and everybody that helped put that together and make that happen. And we are going to have some staff zucchinis out there, I heard, for next year. So we're going to get in the races. Just an update, we do have, as a reminder, we do have a newsletter the city puts out every couple of weeks, thanks to Sarah and our team, who does a great job pulling together good information to get out to the community. So I highly recommend, if you're interested in what's going on in the city, please sign up on our website for the newsletter. Get some great information. We've added a new feature, a contractor's corner, this latest go-around, to try to get information out about things that are happening in the building and planning department and in the city that contractors might find helpful, how to do business with the city on Fridays and other things. So we'll continue to keep pushing information out through the newsletter. Another thing that we pushed out this latest newsletter was an update on our cemeteries, essentially a little teaser that we are open for business in the cemeteries. We do, are working on expanding capacity. We're revamping our cemeteries. We have Carolyn Fulton now on board, who's our cemetery manager, doing an excellent job getting stuff ordered, talking to people that want to preorder places within the cemetery. So if you have any interest, please contact us. You can visit the website. Her information is on there. We also have a new email, cemeteries@sonomacity.org, that you can email. It'll go directly to her, make sure you get your questions answered. And we're also planning some cemetery cleanup dates, similar to what we did last year. So the first one will be Saturday, September 2nd, from nine to noon, and that'll be the Valley Cemetery. And then following, the following month will be Mountain Cemetery on October 26th, and then the Veteran Cemetery on November 9th. And those are all on the website as well. We'll get information out in the newsletter and continue to share that information with everybody. The mayor did mention that the BAFABON, the Housing Bond, the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, pulled that measure off the November ballot, unfortunately. A lot of people put a lot of work into getting that to that point. So we are all adjusting to figure out how to address that affordable housing gap that all cities are struggling with. And so that could have been a substantial amount of money that came to our community for affordable housing. So and we are looking at other options, looking at our own internal processes, looking at what we can do to help further and generate the housing we need in our community. Another quick update, I do participate in the school consolidation process. So the Sonoma Valley School District is looking at consolidation. Last night, we had a meeting and boiled down, brought down the potential options to about four options that we'll be looking at financial feasibility on. I guess what I want to recommend is if you're interested in that and you want to pay attention to that, there is a website. And if you go to Sonoma Valley Unified, Sonoma Valley Unified School District website, there's information about when the meetings are. They are public meetings. All the information is available. You can follow along. The plan is for that to go to the school board in November to have some discussion with the school board. I also want to thank our public works crews. They were out fixing some benches along the bike paths. I know those were some that were in pretty bad shape. And when you, the paint was being chipped off, and they were prickly, it was kind of sitting on a hedgehog on some of them. So they did sand those down, painted them up, and they're looking great. We have gotten good feedback from community members already on that. So thank you to the public works crews for doing that. And then finally, we are having a celebration in this chamber tomorrow night. Is that right? Yeah, tomorrow, Thursday, from 3:30 to 5:30 for the celebration of trees exhibit that's on the walls here. So the artist reception, it will be here again from 3:30 to 5:30. That's before the planning commission. So we'll need to have everybody out by 5:30 so we can get to business at six o'clock. So we encourage you to attend. It's a great, great chance to meet the artists and the photographers and everybody that did all the work to get these here and thank them for their work. That's all I've got.
Thank you. City attorney report.
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to the consent calendar. So the items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council or staff request specific items be removed for separate action. Would anybody in the public like to address an item on the consent calendar? I believe there was somebody that did want to.
Hi, my name is Sedra Nathan. There we go. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. Thank you for having me. I'm here to speak in support of Agenda Item 7.5, which pertains to the bicycle and pedestrian improvement funded by the Go Sonoma SCTA grant. And while I know that this project already has support and is a fantastic project, what I'm here to speak about is to highlight its broader significance and how it aligns with strategic goals, particularly in climate action, urban connectivity, safety, and enhancing public spaces. And so what I want to call out is that, you see at the bottom of these reports, there's this little small section that says and asks whether this project aligns with council goals. And for this project, it marks not applicable. But I believe this is, this is an opportunity to recognize the true impacts that this project has, not as an additional burden on staff, but as a way to streamline decision-making and enhance the effectiveness of our city council goals and initiatives of the city commissions. So we have small staff, I understand that. And it's a unique and special city where the general funds are equally met by tourist dollars as well as property tax dollars. And so what we're trying to say is that we really want to have something that supports staff when considering the economic future and vibrancy of the city. So for example, the PROS Commission is focusing on enhancing recreational opportunities. And by integrating this project with their efforts, we can ensure that our bike paths and pedestrian areas serve as both transportation routes and key recreational spaces that are also safe passageways. Similarly, Cultural and Fine Arts Commission ensures our, ensures our infrastructure is not only practical but beautiful, reflecting the community's unique character. And then the Climate Action Commission, of course, is deeply committed to alternative vehicle use and active transportation as a major strategy for greenhouse gas reduction. And then there's the voices of the community that we're hearing from in terms of the general plan update process and the feedback given to Traffic Safety Commission. And so there's a clear, consistent desire for safe, accessible connections throughout the city. So these aren't isolated. This is an integrated idea. And we're not asking for one more thing for staff. We're asking for, this is the thing. This is the idea. And so of the six city commissions, here are four that deeply care about this. And so I hope give you these comments and submit them to the city. But the idea is to really support staff in an integrated fashion and streamline things because we love working with you guys and we want to support the efforts through the commissions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Anything else on the consent calendar from the public? Mr. Wallander.
Yes, I would like to go ahead and pull for discussion Agenda Item 7.10.
All right, 7.10 being pulled from the consent calendar. Other than that, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as it stands?
I have, just would like to highlight one piece of information in 7.7, if that's possible, just so that it's on the record. And so in regards to 7.7, I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware because often they see the consent calendar, they don't read everything, and they're, that they're, this is in regard to I will get my acronym straight eventually, or correct eventually. So, but just wanted to make sure that there will be a public meeting, that this is, you know, to be able to comment on this and really have an in-depth discussion around that on September 18th, 2024. Thank you. And now I will, oh, it's your turn to prove.
I'd like to make a recommendation to accept the consent calendar with the one Item 7.10 being pulled for discussion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Roca.
Vice Mayor Ferrarivas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wellender.
Yes.
Mayor Gurney.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries 302.
All right. So now we will take Item 7.10, which is adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a task order with Land Culture LLP, previously doing business as Anne Baker Landscape Architect for Olson Park Renovations. Ms. Walander.
Great, yes, I do have some questions regarding this particular project. My first question is, the original on-call contract we had with the design professional, what was the amount of that on-call?
The original amount was $50,000, and I'm going from memory here, I could research this a little bit maybe during the meeting, but I believe the original on-call that we had was $50,000 divided up among three projects equally, and it could have been 30. There was three separate projects that we worked on in the original task order.
And what were the other two besides Olson Park?
Sonoma Valley Oaks.
Yeah, Sonoma Valley Oaks. And the new park, which I believe that that money is still unspent.
Okay, great. You were referring to MacArthur, I mean Fifth Street West and West MacArthur.
Correct.
Okay, and that vacant lot that, okay. I was just going over the budget, and I was a little bit confused. I know that the project, based upon the breakdown that was given to the PROS Commission, had identified the shortfall of about $100,000 plus. But what that shortfall did not include was any contingencies. So for a legitimate project going from design through construction, I would think that we would want to go ahead and include some sort of contingency, and I, so that's a concern that I have, that we truly look at what the project costs are going to be. The second thing that I didn't pick up on was, in that budget number of $405,000, that I don't believe it included the design fees, which at this point, we know, we'll say was $33,000 for the equal division, and then they're now asking for $51,000 for the construction documents. So I just want to make sure that in this fiscal year of challenge, where we have a deficit, that we are moving forward with thoughtfulness and that we have accountability on that. The other question that I have is that in the phase two of this project, where they're asking for monies to move into the construction document phase, it was stated that one of their tasks was going to be to bring the project in budget with some sort of design modification. As I review the consultant's breakdown of the identified tasks, starting with meeting with staff, et cetera, there was no mention of there being the design modification as far as calling out for some sort of number. So I just want to make sure that there is clarity that says at this point in time, the expectation is that the design is going to be value engineered before it moves into construction documents.
Yes, and that'll happen internally with staff.
Oh, staff's going to do the value engineering?
The value engineering is in our court. We'll have a little bit of interaction with the designer, but that is in our court.
Okay, very good. In terms of this next phase of construction documents, in the event that once the construction documents are completed, and it goes out to competitive bid, and the three bids come in over budget, just in that scenario, then what obligation does that design professional have? Are we requiring them to revisit the design, or is it going to be a case where you'll be seeking to come to council for more money? Again, I'm framing this with concerns that, again, our budget deficit. And the monies that I see, based upon the CIP and Measure M, it's not all adding up for me. So I just want to make sure. And I guess my last comment is one, I guess I'd like to direct basically to the city manager, is in light of our $2.9 million deficit, is it wise to go forward and continue with this project where we will be drawing $50,000 is the ask for '24, '25 out of our general fund, when we still don't know where we are in the big picture?
Yeah, I do feel that I'm comfortable moving forward with the design at this point. Obviously, we won't go to construction until we have an engineer's estimate to figure out what we think it will cost, and that's when we'll have a reality moment of what's the market going to bear in terms of construction and what we think it's going to cost. And so to your question earlier about what happens if it's over, that's the same of any CIP project, we're going to have to do the best engineer's estimate we can. If we put it out to bid and they all come in over, we may need to pull it back and rethink, either not go out to construction, or hold off for another year, or come back and redesign. So we'll have to have that option at that point, but we don't know what that is until we see what the market is. But I do feel at this point, having this project ready to go, it does potentially set us up in looking at, are there other funds out there, are there ways we can get grants, we have a shovel-ready project, something that's ready to go. But I think having a design ready to go, documents ready to go, I think is a good move for the city at this point.
I believe my last question is that, it was noted that the design fees were going to be drawn from, I believe, the term was public works as a line item for engineering fees, so in other words, it's covered somewhere?
It's covered in this year's budget, yes.
But, I'm sorry, it was implied that it was covered under some engineer's design allotment. And I confided, when I was looking through the book, the finance book for '23, '24, I didn't know where you were drawing to cover that $51,000 of design fee at this point.
Yeah, I could take a look at the budget and review that with you at any time.
Sure.
Yeah.
That'll be fine. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up question in regards to the design. So the ability to have the design ready for Olson, but would that also have the design ready for the two other parks? Because I do like the idea of that we have the designs ready so that we can actually look for funding, you know, we have things shovel-ready and could potentially get the extra funding that we need to implement them. So it would cover all three parts, are we already doing the design for all three or just this one at this point? Just Olson, right?
This is just Olson, yeah. And we do have a future work item for doing the preliminary work at Fifth West and MacArthur.
I would like to go ahead and make a comment, and that is, I believe it was layered somewhere in the approval process that Fifth Street West and West MacArthur was a goal. I have expressed for the record that I did not support that project until we can, again, demonstrate that based on the staff that we have, that we can support and maintain our parks at what I call an acceptable level, and not adding more acreage. So I did not support the idea of going forward. In fact, I'm disappointed that we've even done any design work on that and spent any part of the original allotment or the on-call fee for that, because I know that, I've expressed that in the past, that the concern is that we're asking a staff that we know is limited at best now to do more acreage, just, and I believe that also it has been suggested that that area is really limited in green space. But I think we're missing out that there is already a linear park and green space along Sonoma Creek that is really special. So that when it has been argued in the past that there is no green space for the people to the west of Fifth Street West, I'd like to suggest that there is. So again, I want to go on record of my lack of support for going forward at this point in time, particularly with our deficit and the forecast for deficits for the next five years.
All right, Ms. Walander, that's been on the record. We're a little off track here in terms of what the issue before us is tonight. Is there a motion to approve the Olson Park Project Resolution?
Aye, so moved.
Is there a second? I will second it. Roca, please. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Seeing none, we'll go back to Roca.
Vice Mayor Ferrarivas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wellender. Mayor Gurney.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries 302.
All right, we will move on to the regular calendar. No public hearings this evening. And Item 9.1, adopt a resolution approving the updated 2024 City of Sonoma Emergency Operations Plan. Ms. Tracy.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Sarah Tracy, I'm the Senior Management Analyst and Public Information Officer with the City of Sonoma, and one of my key areas of focus is emergency preparedness and response. And as part of that responsibility, I was involved in the review and preparation of what you have before you today, which is the City of Sonoma Emergency Operations Plan, specifically the base plan. We refer to it often as the EOP, it's a, emergency operation plan is a lot to say. The Emergency Operation Plan, or EOP, update will be presented by Alicia Johnson, she's the founder of Two Lynchpin Road, the city's emergency planning contractor. This update is a significant step in ensuring the city remains prepared to respond effectively to disasters and emergencies. And I want to just make a special note that this initiative was originally started by Wayne Ryrick, the city's former Development Services Director and Building Official, who has since retired. And I'd also like to recognize the contribution of Dave Drefries, the city's former consultant, who he dedicated much of his time and expertise to this effort before retiring. Sadly, Dave has since passed away, and we extend our gratitude to him for his work on this project. Wayne and Dave's dedication laid the foundation for the current update, and we are grateful for their commitment to the safety and resilience of our community. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Alicia Johnson, who will walk us through the key updates and enhancements made in the EOP.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
The volume is a little low.
A little low, okay, I'll speak up a little bit, how's that, better?
Better.
Okay, great. We'll get started on this. As Sarah mentioned, I am the contractor who took the plan that Wayne and Dave created, we adjusted it, and kind of brought it back up to the current speed with regulations, and now we're ready for approval on this particular piece. Of course, you all know about emergency planning and that it's more important than ever as residents of the City of Sonoma and us Sonoma County, you're well aware of the hazards, wildfires, earthquakes, and of course, severe storms and major power outages, all of which Sonoma has seen in recent years. And also well aware that the importance of, there are other risks like active shooter incidents and terrorist attacks, and of course, things like staff turnover that create a really important part of why we create emergency operations plans for communities. Refreshing Sonoma's emergency planning strategy is key to that point, helping us really internalize, and I say us, I'm a former resident of the City of Sonoma, so I just moved a week ago, but really helping us learn the lessons of wildfires, severe weather, public safety power shutdowns, and other things, helping the community develop more effective emergency management practices. And that includes working with staff and partners across the City of Sonoma to really internalize what preparedness looks like. And then, of course, focusing on that whole community approach, it's often a term that we use in emergency management to denote the connection we have with nonprofit and private sector organizations throughout any range of communities. Addressing needs, like access and functional needs, those who are, perhaps require ADA components, those who speak a language other than English as their primary language, understanding what that looks like, and being able to work with those individuals, and creating capacity for mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery through the whole entire cycle, going beyond what the county can do for you and helping yourself as well. The key updates to the plan, we enhanced our alignment with the state emergency management system, that's SIMS, and also the National Incident Management System, NIMS. And we created, basically updating those procedures for coordination and communication, and really adhering to the compliance of the guidance from the Department of Homeland Security and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. We also updated the legal framework and authorities, referencing any new references for the California Emergency Services Act, and then reflecting the California Natural Disaster Assistance Act, and then adhering to the latest guidelines from CALOES, which is the Office of Emergency Services at the state. We revised our emergency proclamation procedures, making sure that they have a more detailed proclamation point, and including the roles and responsibilities, both for a director of emergency management as well as for the city council. And then outlining the steps for the requested state and federal assistance, should those be needed. And then really honing in on the continuity of government, creating the line of succession for key management staff, a comprehensive plan for critical city services, including the essential functions and preserving vital records. We also integrated the best practices and lessons learned, particularly honing in on what we call AARs, or After Action Reports, and recent exercises that we've done with the city, and also those lessons learned that we've been able to glean from county and other areas across the bay. We created new sections on training and exercise, gathering that kind of regular emphasis of what that looks like for the city, and improved our coordination with regional and county plans, and updated all of the references and resources so those maintain current capacity and are easily referenceable if needed during an emergency. Those are the highlights from what we've done. I'm happy to answer any questions that you or others might have, and with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
I'm just curious, based upon the evaluation of the past and the events that we had personal experience with in '17 and '19, I'm curious, how did we do from our response time? And I was not involved in this position back then, but I'm curious, because my perception is that we did quite well in terms of responding to it as a community.
Sarah, do you want to address that first, or would you like me to?
I can certainly start. I wasn't in the office, I started here, I think, a month after the 2017 fire, so I wasn't here for the actual incident, but I was here for all of the recovery efforts of the recovery efforts, and certainly was part of, gleaned a lot of information, and it was all very fresh. So I had an opportunity to view that. And also, in 2019, I think you're referring mostly to the PSPS events, which were very widespread at that time. And at that time, the city was very well-prepared for it. 2017 was certainly, I think, often referred to as a wake-up call for not just our region, but for many, and that was true for the city. But I do believe our small entity, which is often, as we know, gets cut off from other county resources, is pretty good at coming together when we need to and addressing the emergency, which was done to mostly satisfaction. We were very fortunate in the city. We actually did not sustain any damage from the 2017 fires in city limits. Though there were preparations, obviously, that in that case, there were a few instances of that. 2019, we had a much different game plan, from my understanding. We went into it very well-prepared comparatively to 2017, just having gone through some things so fresh, and also had a very comprehensive annex, which is something that you may have a question about. Anaxes are additional guidelines and processes for very specific ways to respond to specific emergencies. So we have one for power shut-offs because of that. And so I think that the base plan is always good, as we train on that, and then you kind of get it into your system, and then we kind of bring out playbooks for what we need to, and we need to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for all this work. This is, I realize, the amount of attention to detail something like this takes to actually put together. So thank you, Sarah, and thank you to everybody ahead of time that participated in this. So I have, you know, so a couple of questions. One is kind of, in other disaster recovery plans, I mean, that I've looked at or helped develop in the past, is you will often have a page that is actually listing who are the current, you know, like who, you know, we know it's the city manager, but lists the name, the contact information, would list who our Assistant Director of Emergency Services is. So I'm assuming that's you, Sarah. I'm not sure. See? So I wasn't able to glean that from this, and I did look in all of those. And then also, that there would be, you know, in regards to city council members, where our role is, I think, to do whatever is asked of us and to stay out of the way as much as possible. But also, for us to be able to know as city council members, kind of what the overall, it says our expectations, but what if our family is evacuated? So kind of, you know, that kind of order of, you know, like the disaster planning, if X, then Y, so that there's real specifics that you can go to. And, you know, like the calling tree, or I guess we have a texting tree now, or whatever. Just wondering if that's also going to be, those type of things will also be included.
Those are great questions. I'll take that first, and then Sarah, I'll hand it over to you. I'll answer the second question first. Typically, the way that I have seen it done, and I have delivered it when I've worked for other communities across the Bay Area and across the US, is we've created essentially what's called a policy guide. So that is a resource that you, as policymakers, would have access to. It's specifically designed for you, so you know what to do in your district at a given time with whatever is happening. And also, that allows you to plug into an emergency operations center as it's beginning. You want to make sure that you have the appropriate training and knowledge, and that you don't feel totally left out in terms of what that looks like, and also that we're really leveraging your capacity and your capability. You're trusted voices inside a community that really matter. It can make a huge difference in what response and preparedness and also recovery look like for any given event. And then in regards to the calling tree, and kind of the kind of continuity of what that will look like for an organization, we purposely chose not to include that, because this is essentially a public document, and many of those names and faces change regularly, and we don't want to have to come back to you and have it reapproved every single moment that someone changes or moves to a different position. And so we will be inserting that. That will be part of kind of an annex, if you will, an opportunity to continue to include it, and I'll work directly with Sarah to make sure that happens. But as part of your policy guidance document, as policymakers, you'll have access to that as well. So you will know what that looks like. But we don't want the resident to call because they're scared and don't know what to do, and, you know, bog down the phone lines, when those phone lines really will be needed to communicate with first responders, to make very critical decisions at a time when they're absolutely necessary. Thank you. Very helpful.
Thank you, Alicia. And I'll just, I will add, we do maintain a list in the office. Again, it is an internal list that lists out not just who's in each role, but also the depth. There's usually several people. If someone's not there, who would be the next in line? And we have those for all of the incident command positions, which is a little bit more of a detail I won't go into here. But you can be sure that that is all something that's been, I recently updated. Alicia and I are working on a lot of other projects for that. But despite it looking like you have nothing to do, as the PIO, I will say, I will be reaching out to you, so that, to make sure you are camera-ready to do all those media interviews and whatnot. You do have a very important role to play, just not necessarily in the EOC, literally doing the emergency response. But you do play a very key role in being a conduit from the emergency, what we are doing in the EOC, and communicating a lot of that to the public and the outside. So just wanted to clarify that.
I should also mention, you're communicating that into the EOC as well. So it's a two-way street. We rely on you as much as you will be relying on us. So we appreciate your participation in both directions.
Alicia, I just, I'm curious, what is your background exactly?
Yeah, I have more than 20 years as an emergency manager across the Bay Area. Most recently, I was the Director of Emergency Management for the University of California Berkeley during COVID. And prior to that, I worked for the City of San Francisco as their Resilience and Recovery Manager. Currently, I have clients all across the United States, including working with the federal government at the Federal Emergency Management Agency as well. So my background is primarily in public information and planning. And during the 2017 fires, I was working with David Hewin in the San Rosa EOC.
Very good. Thank you. Having been a police chief and dealing with emergency operations, I think this is an excellent document. As with any document, you hate to see it sit on the shelf someplace, and you like to know that it's a living document being utilized. And one of the things, when it comes to exercising the plan itself, it occurred to me that there could be some value to video recording the exercise, so that it could be televised, perhaps, to the community. These are the kinds of things that the city invests in. We work with it, we exercise, and I think the community would appreciate knowing how prepared we really are, because they don't get to see this kind of activity. So that's just a thought. I throw that out there. But a job well done in this document.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the emergency plan policy document?
I move to adopt the emergency plan document.
Mayor Gurney, can we do public comment prior to?
Public comment, please. I don't know what it is about that. Seeing none. We'll come back. So we have a motion, I heard. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ferrar Rivas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wellender?
Yes.
Mayor Gurney?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 302. Thank you.
All right. Now, we are moving to item 9.2, a discussion, consideration, possible adoption of a city council resolution to adopt a policy to allow alternative sidewalk materials and designate the Public Works Director the authority to issue permits for sidewalks and driveways. Ms. Gates?
That pretty much summed it up.
Thank you very much. Public comment?
I'll just briefly state a couple things. So as stated in the staff report, you know, the goal of this policy is, we currently have a municipal code that says only concrete can be allowed, but as we recognize in some situations that that may not be a material that allows for some creativity in order to preserve some of our trees due to their root systems and things. So we are looking to increase some flexibility and allow our Public Works Director, with the assistance of the arborist, as well as the city engineer, in determining what kind of alternative materials are appropriate in certain locations based on specific site considerations. And, you know, the intent is always to have that safe path of travel, and then what are those materials that could, that still allow for that. The other aspect is just a little nuance that was in the code from 1955, that said our building inspector issues permits for sidewalks and driveways, and we know that doesn't really happen. So for the time being, until we update the code, we just wanted to make it nice and clear that it's actually the Public Works Director's department. So that's it. Questions?
I'm sure there are. Mr. Wellender?
Just for clarity, will the permit be an encroachment permit, or will it be a construction permit?
It's an encroachment permit.
Encroachment permit. And I'm just speculating as far as the process might be. So if there's an individual that has a concern, would it be a case where they would be coming to Public Works and having a discussion, saying, I got this situation at 1826-5 Maple Drive, and I've got a tree of concern, I believe I'd like to save, address it, whatever. In other words, because you require in the encroachment permit some sort of drawings and specifications, I think it would be in the applicant's best interest to have at least a pre-meeting to know that, gee, is this something that is worth considering, whether it be a flexible pavement or whatever, DG whatever. So is that something that's planned for, or can be anticipated as part of the process?
Yeah, I know that the Public Works Director and myself are always happy to meet people before they submit for any permit of any kind. So we do anticipate that that will be, and that's encouraged, to do the due diligence, as I call it, before actually submitting. And then that way, we're identifying what needs to be submitted with your application, and it allows us to schedule, like, the arborist and things like that, and what they're going to need. And then it may be that we'll work with the city engineer as well, that they already have some specifications for certain alternative materials, and what that looks like, and what our goals are.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Quick question. So in regards to the materials used, is there any criteria, or what type of regulations are we looking at? So for example, I'm sure you're paying attention, like, I would imagine Prop 65 or other, to make sure that the materials don't, aren't having other environmental, negative environmental effects? Is, you know, how is that, that piece of this being dealt? Because I think it's a great idea. I really like this. I appreciate this. I think it's important to have the flexibility. But so I'm always looking at kind of, are there environmental guardrails there?
We can look at that, if there's certain instances where there's materials that have that impact. I mean, we can see what's out there and see what people are proposing. But there are no, I would say, quote-unquote, parameters that we are presetting. It's going to be more of a conversation, now that, if this policy passed, that we would have with the city engineer and the arborist, on what are those different types of materials that work. And it's going to be, again, a case-by-case basis. I would like to, I think our intent, though, is to set some policy standards around what our preferred alternative material is going to be.
Yeah, and the resolution does give discretion to the Public Works Director to promulgate regulations to implement that.
We can keep that in mind.
Keep it in mind. No, because I would just like to, and I realize that we, you know, overall, I feel that the current staff at City Hall has the intention of utilizing materials that are environmentally conscious as possible. But I always take into consideration is like, you know, once we're all gone, what's going to happen next? So just to make sure that there's, you know, some language or some, something in regards to that, you know, in making these decisions, that that would be, that that would play a role, to be looking at also the environmental impact of the materials used.
Okay. Let's see if there's any public comment.
Hi there, I'm Sedra Nathan. This is going to be a theme, because I think there's really one topic still. And this is about having integration and connections with things. And so this is another one of those infrastructure projects. It's about building a better Sonoma, a connected Sonoma. And so we're excited about this project, because it offers the opportunity for co-benefits. And so we just finished working on a grant to Cal Fire, and half that grant was about finding out what kind of co-benefits. How can you have more bang for your buck? And so this is, offers opportunity for things like permeable pavement and materials that are innovative and forward-thinking, and creating better pathways and better connections throughout the city. And that's something that you hear over and over from the community. They want these kind of newer materials, innovative infrastructure, things that create a more beautiful, harmonious, environmental, connected community, a livable city. And so this affords an opportunity to move in that direction, and it is an integrated opportunity, it could be an opportunity for integration across having greenhouse gas reduction materials in terms of permeable pavement, having a beautiful and aesthetic infrastructure in terms of what materials are in the design elements, having parks and recreation and open space also support this, and having it be safe facilities. So the idea, again, is if we can link and have a framework that makes more bang for buck and facilitates everything that these commissions are doing, and touch upon the goals of city council, it's just, it's not one more thing to do, it's one project. So that's what I'm hoping to impress upon everybody, because all roads lead to Rome. I mean, the plaza, right? Okay, thank you very much.
Our little Rome. Thank you. Any other, any more public comment? Bring it back to the council. Discussion?
I would, I may be interpreting, but I would love to see that this kind of supports the, or the impetus behind this is the idea of saving trees. And I'd like to think that the view that we as a city will be taking is that trees are good, cutting trees down are bad, and that we will really be as creative as possible in coming up with every possibility of trying to save a tree. And invariably, there are going to be some conditions where that's not feasible, even as much as we would like it. But I would love to see, I don't think we can make coattails onto it, but the idea of if we take down a tree, we have to replace the tree. But in terms of giving the Public Works Director the authority, the responsibility, I support. And again, I think that if this is an avenue where we truly can be creative and we can save trees, that maybe a different selection could have been made down the road, or maybe there could have been a better way of planting it originally, rather than some of the examples I've seen throughout the city. So I'm very supportive and pleased what has been brought forth.
Call for the question.
So I move to pass the agenda item, consideration for the adoption for alternative sidewalk materials, and designate the Public Works Director the authority to issue permits for sidewalks and driveways.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Ferrar Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellender?
With enthusiasm.
Mayor Gurney?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries 302.
Okay. Item 9.3, appointments to the Sonoma Valley Groundwater Sustainability Advisory Committee and Sonoma Community Housing Corporation. Ms. Barr?
Yes. So before you this evening, it seems like we've been doing this quite regularly now. I'm happy to say that we're very close to having all of our positions on both the Group A and Group B committees and commissions filled. So this evening... So this evening, we are going to be looking at the Sonoma County Sustainable Groundwater Management Advisory Committee and the Sonoma Community Housing Corporation Board. At the last meeting, the council took action to change the residency requirements, whereas the Sonoma Groundwater Advisory Committee was required to be a qualified elector of the city. It is now, part of, the bylaws require it to be part of the Sonoma Valley Basin. And then the Community Housing Corporation was silent on that, so the residency requirements. So the individuals that have all applied for these two positions are all eligible. The first one is the Groundwater Sustainability Advisory Committee. You have three individuals that applied, Josh Dickinson, Elena Nair, and Laura Rosas. They all are in the basin. That being said, their residency is not far outside of the city limits. It's not in Glen Ellen or Kenwood, so that they are part of the Sonoma Valley Basin for the groundwater requirement by the bylaws. So tonight, we'll ask that you appoint one individual to serve on that committee. And then the other piece is the Sonoma Housing Corporation. And this is, one member is appointed by the council. And so we're asking you to, there is one individual who applied, who was qualified for that position. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would suggest that you take these individually.
Okay. Is there, do we take public comment on these appointments? Then why don't we just go right to public comment? Seeing copious public comment, not happening. We'll bring it back to the council. Why don't we deal with the second matter first?
Yeah.
It's the easy one, I think. So I don't know Mr. Baker, but...
Yeah, I think we need to wait and see because I, the application didn't say much. I don't know much about Mark Baker and so I wouldn't feel comfortable in making that, you know, for us to vote on that right now. I mean, the application basically, maybe it was just...
Did you get the resume? Was it, resume was not attached to that?
Yes, there is a resume.
I picked that back.
I thought I didn't, for some reason, it didn't show up on mine.
Oh, come on.
Well, you think that's it, that's my excuse. Well, I was looking, I looked, let's put it this way, I looked for it.
There you go.
Okay, so what, but then, oh yeah, I saw that resume. I did see that resume. Yes, I did see that resume. But what I didn't see is anything on his commission application that really indicated what specific areas of expertise he had in, to be, to be on this commission or, you know, his understanding of the commission. So I felt incomplete to me.
I will say with this corporate, the board, it has been defunct since 2014 and it is a, the board is, the membership is the, two members of the council, the city manager, and I believe it's the appointee of the council and one appointee of the city manager, I believe is the makeup of this. It's not made up of public individuals in a whole. It is a Brown Act committee. Vice Mayor Farah Rivas, we have advertised this probably, it's been for quite some time and no one else has stepped forward. We will gladly continue to do that. It's more of a specialized and in particularly, and I, let me pull it up, it is in particularly in response to this corporation is the, the Sonoma Creek Affordable Housing piece. And I can get you more information on that. It's not a broad, there's not a broad perspective or purview of this corporation or this board and maybe city manager, sorry.
No, and I think if the, if the council would like additional time for evaluation, I think we can, we definitely could support that. It sounds like with the current members and appointment that I need to make, we could create a quorum if we need to hold a meeting that wouldn't essentially rush you to make a decision in this if you want to spend more time.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'd just also like to hear if either, any of you know the, know the person or have...
Two questions. And it pertains to both appointments and that is, is it illegal to get a phone number so that we can actually engage in a conversation with an individual that applies, particularly when you look at, at the application having precious little information, then you go to the resume and albeit it is filled with a number of items, but I see nothing that's directly related to housing? So is this just a passion? Is this somebody who feels strongly about the, the need? So anyway, I just throw that out there with a question.
I, I think we can go ahead and we'll hold off on this particular appointment. There is an email address directly to the applicant, I believe, and you should be able to reach out to him.
Mayor Gurney and council members, we can provide you directly a contact information. We won't provide personal information in public documents.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so let's move on to the second.
Position.
This one is a little more challenging because we have a wealth of information. So I will open it up to discussion.
So I would say, I mean, in looking at this of these three individuals, we certainly look like we have three qualified individuals that have expertise in this area or have served on an advisory board related to this area, related to the groundwater agency, groundwater service agency. But I would say that for me, the, the individual, and I haven't met with these people, I always feel a little nervous when I haven't met with these people, but I would say, and I did look them all up on the internet, I did do that. But I would say in regards to Elena Nair, 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 I would think it would be pronounced, that she seemed to have the most specific, relevant background with Josh. He could potentially have more specific, but it didn't, his, also his application was really pretty brief in regards to like, you know, he's advised to the GSA, but you know, I didn't know a whole lot more about that in relationship to this. But so that would have been, so my recommendation would be Elena, but I would like to hear what the other council members have to say.
Mr. Wellender?
I'm curious, having sub for one of the meetings with the groundwater, their advisory, not to us, their advisory to the board of supervisors?
To the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Committee.
Agency, which we are not a member.
We have a...
Councilmember Deng is on that, is on that body.
Right.
But it is a separate legal entity.
Yeah, yes, yes. And I'm the alternate, so I, I'm aware of that formal structure, but I was just trying to figure out who their advisory to, so their advisory in and of themselves, but do they not take recommendations then to the board of supervisors?
No, they take them to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors.
To the agency board, which is not this board, this is just a localized.
This is the advisory board, this is the advisory committee?
Correct.
To the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board, just like the planning commission is advisory to this council.
Correct.
So essentially, you are, it is a little odd, but you'd think that the board would be, would be appointing the members to their advisory committee from there, but they're not. Their bylaws require that, that come from different stakeholders. And the idea is to get as many stakeholders who have some interest in the groundwater basin to be advising the board of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency itself.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarity. In, in reviewing the three applications, I think, I won't say that we could throw a dart and close our eyes, but it seems like they all have professional experiences either in related or could easily have the, the maturity of being able to make a contribution. But as I read the bios, that it appears that, I, I agree with my fellow councilwoman that Elena seems to have the direct experience having dealt with practice of land use and real estate. So that would be my thought at this point, but I would love to hear from the mayor.
Well, actually, I thought that all three of them were, were quite qualified in their respective ways, but I am happy to support a nomination of Elena. It was interesting, the, the legal background of these, of two of these candidates and, so I'm, I'm happy to support my fellow council members if that's the direction. So having said that, is there a nomination to be made?
I would be happy to nominate and I would love to know how to pronounce this woman's name correctly, so I will do the best that I can. Elena Nair to become, to be appointed to the SCGSA advisory committee.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay. And to be clear, you are actually appointing her as the city's appointee, not just nominating her, correct?
Okay, I would like to appoint her.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Farah Rivas?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellender?
Yes.
Mayor Gurney?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passes 302. We'll also be bringing back to you in the near future the youth members. We're going to be advertising for that. This week, the advertisement will go out because those terms end September and the...
Library commission.
It's out. And we've only received one application and the individual lives in Santa Rosa, so a little bit far out of the area, even though it's in...
So for that one, they can be in the valley?
It's actually, they can be in the county.
In the county?
In the county. But the preference obviously would be to have someone more local than...
Yeah, in the, yeah. Someone, I think it's good to think of like who utilizes our, our local library, which is most folks in the valley. Yeah, great, thank you.
Mr. Wellender?
Just a follow-up comment, given the qualifications of the two that were not selected, if you let them down gently, but also encourage them that there are other opportunities that may come up and we would welcome their participation in supporting the city in some other way.
We will definitely do that.
Because I think Laura Rosas has applied for other positions, if I'm correct, and she seems very highly qualified. So she seems to be, it might be a benefit of us to meet, one of us from the council to meet with her and get to know her and, you know, find out, you know, where her greatest interests are so that we can, you know, you know, keep her in mind for upcoming opportunities.
All right. Moving on to item number 10, second public comment period. Are there any further public comments? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.